Okay, I'll go ahead and call this February 8th, 2018 Regular Board Meeting to Order at 6:03 PM. We'll stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Good morning, Father. We thank you for giving us another day. Thank you, God, for grace and mercy. And we pray, Lord, that you'd look out for us tonight, Lord. Look over our school district, Lord. God be with those that are sick. Lord, you know all about that. Lord, we pray, God, that you'd give us the leadership and guidance this night, Lord, as we try to do what's best for this school district. Lord, we just pray, Lord, that you'd overlook and your will would be done. We ask these favors in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item will be to amend the presented agenda. We've got some people sick and that's going to change. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to amend the presented agenda to remove the student recognition. That will move that over to next month. Huge sicknesses there. Under Superintendent Reports, we need to add a G, which is going to be a proposal for a potential lease from the Pickens County Sheriff's Office for the JMS site. Do I hear a second to that motion? I made that into the motion.
I second.
Is it you?
No.
Seconded by Ms. White. I'm sorry, Ms. Lewis. Is there any discussion on that amendment? All in favor? Five. Not opposed. Motion carries. Next will be the approval of the amended agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion by Mr. Long.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Finley. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. None opposed. Next item will be to go into executive session. I will make a motion to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, and to consider a matter involving the disclosure of personally identifiable information from a student's educational records. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion? And all in favor? Five. None opposed. Motion carries. Okay. At 7:12 PM, a motion was made by Ms. Lewis, seconded by Ms. White, to come out of executive session. No action was taken. Do I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read?
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. White. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Next item, approval of personnel. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended Personnel Action Report?
I move that we approve the amended Personnel Action Report.
Second. Motion by Ms. Finley, seconded by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Next will be Superintendent Reports. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Martha, just a second, get ya?
He's six of the students.
Oh, okay. I will review the general fund as of February 5th. We've collected 66.88 percent of our budgeted revenue, and I always bring your attention to the top line. We are at an 88.84 percent collection for our property taxes. We've expended 45.57 percent of our budgeted expenditures, and although we are over halfway through the year, please do remember that any employee who is not 12 months, we have three months in June that we have to accumulate. So we're not quite to the halfway point with most of our staff. Do y'all have any questions on the general fund? Our sploshed account, we received $445,516.55 in sploshed revenue. It earned interest of $2,087.43. Issued one check, and that was for our IP camera project, and that was throughout the system. That was all school, central office, maintenance, transportation. And that brings our balance at the end of January to $9,374,395.60. And then our last report is just an update of where we are at this time. This nice check brought our average up to $382,000, just shy of $700 for the past 12 months. I cannot tell you what caused it, but I do pursue it. I call the Department for Revenue, and they don't talk to me, and if they ever do, I will let you know. But I don't really care what happened. We got that much more money, and it's great, and we'll take it and apply it to our current splosh projects. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And we have attendance by Mr. Young.
I'm not Shelley Campbell, so you guys have to bear with me here, but Shelley unfortunately is sick and was not with us today, so I'm going to do the presentation for her this evening. Martha, please keep me in order. The... Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay. The detailed drops by history for the month. Shelley reported to you last month, December, we had four, and I'm happy to report that in the month of January, there were none, which is a good thing. Next report that Shelley gives is the attendance report, and it appears that it's going to Pickens County Middle School. Turn the banner open, Penny there. Penny's school had a grade of 95.32 percent. So, awesome. Good job, Pickens County Middle School. All right, the next piece of information that we have is the certified staff, and I don't think in all the years I've been around, and it's a lot of them now, I don't think this has ever happened, but Pickens High School. Staff attendance for the second consecutive month. Congratulations. Good job. The superintendent had also asked that we gather some numbers for you in relation to the number of sicknesses in the schools, and so Shelley had gathered some information. And just for your information, so that you know, we've got some information here for you, just some numbers, and I'll give them to you by school. Some schools seem to be having more of an issue attendance-wise with illnesses than other schools, but what the superintendent had us do is go back and start running a tally, going back to Monday, January 29th, and compare last year's absenteeism to this year's on those dates, so that we can kind of see what's going on there. So, start with Pickens High School. Pickens High School, as of Thursday, today, had 120 students absent. And to give you some idea, that same time last year, they were sitting at about 80. So their number is up a little bit. The trend since Monday, January 29th, on that day, on January 29th, they had 76 students absent, and that number has steadily increased. It hit 150 students February 2nd absent, and then actually began to decline from that until yesterday, when it started climbing again. So we had dropped down the day before yesterday to 116, and then it jumped to 134. So it has begun a little bit of a climb there. We've also got clinic reports for you. When you look at Pickens High School, the number of clinic visits, up to yesterday, they saw 63 students, and two of those had flu-like symptoms. So that'll give you some idea of the number of students that they saw, and that 63 number, believe it or not, is actually down from the last two days. So, PHS's numbers are not quite as alarming as some of the others. We have Pickens County Middle School. Pickens County Middle School, as of yesterday, had 36 students absent. Same date last year, they had 17. When you go back to January 29th of this year, they had 29 students. So it's gone from 29 and has slowly climbed from there up to a high of 42 Tuesday, and that number dropped down to 36 yesterday. And for Pickens County Middle School, they saw 61 students in the clinic yesterday. One of those students had flu-like symptoms. So... Am I going too fast? Okay. Jasper Middle School, Jasper Middle School began Monday, January 29th, when we started collecting the data, with 32 students absent. That number has climbed today to 106. 106 students absent. Same time, same date, last year, they had 19. That's one of the schools that is being hit harder. When you look at the clinic reports, Jasper Middle School yesterday saw 95 students, and of that 95 students, eight exhibited flu-like symptoms. So that school's numbers are a little more concerning.
And we also have the principal and the assistant principal both home.
They do. That's correct, yeah. Tate, Tate is of yesterday, 30 students absent, and to put that into perspective, same date last year, they had nine. So Tate's numbers have been gradually climbing. Day before yesterday, 25, 26, and then 30. So Tate's numbers are on an uptick, and when you look at Tate's clinic report, they had 25 students seen in the clinic, and of those 25 students, five of those students had flu-like symptoms. So that's another one that's numbers are up there. Hill City Elementary. Hill City Elementary, their data ran through today at 78 students absent. Same date last year, they had 16. So that's another one with some numbers that are up there. And when you look at Hill City's clinic, that number's a little concerning. They had 111 students seen in the clinic, and of that 111, seven exhibited flu-like symptoms.
Wow.
Harmony, as of yesterday, Harmony had 79 students absent. Same date last year, they had 20. So their number is up, and their number has been rising from 61 at the beginning of the week to 76 and to 79. So it's on the uptick, and when you look at their clinic report, they saw 60 students in the clinic today, and of those 60, 13 exhibited flu-like symptoms. So there's another one where there's some concern. And Jasper Elementary School. Jasper Elementary School's number has actually declined. As of today, they had 11 absent. Same time last year, they had 17. So that school is doing a little bit better, and that's also indicated by the clinic report. They saw 50 in the clinic. As of yesterday, they saw 50, and none of those exhibited flu-like symptoms. So...
Go back 40 days.
And just to put those numbers into perspective, 465 students up through Wednesday. 465 students have been seen in the clinics, and 7.74 percent of those students exhibited flu-like symptoms. So that's about 7.7 percent. And that's up, January 22nd of this year, 285 students were in the clinic, and 3 percent were exhibiting flu-like symptoms. So the number of students exhibiting symptoms has more than doubled since January. Through Wednesday, there were 442 students absent. That's 9.6 percent of our student population. 9.6 percent. And to put that into perspective, that same day last year, to give you a snapshot, was 194 students absent. So 442 versus 194 is our total number of absences, and that's 4 percent. Anybody got any questions or any more information they'd like to have on that?
Do you hear anything on staff?
PHS staff numbers through today, had two staff absent, and compare that to last year's number on the same date, they had five. They did last week, seems like was their rough date. They were so desperate that they let me go down and sub. I thought I'll tell you something. They had 10 staff absent Monday, February 5th. So they're trending in the right direction as far as the staff is concerned. Pickens County Middle School, two, and this is on Wednesday, this data runs through, and two last year. JMS, that's where the numbers get a little bit dicey. Today, they had seven absent. Same date last year, they had nine on the staff. So Tate, their date is on Wednesday, had nine. Well, nine seems like a high number. Tate peaked at 20 on Wednesday, February 4th, or February 1st. So Tate's actually trending downward, down to nine, but to put that into perspective, they had two absent same day last year. So it's still up there. Hill City had five absent today. Same date last year, they had three and a half. One of those half people. Harmony, six absent today, and five absent the same date last year. And then JES, I don't have their staff numbers, their staff totals from data. Anything else?
Stacy, how are we doing on bus drivers?
I've got, I was about to say, I've got, I think I've even got that data. Have you got it, Stacy?
We have six out right now. We had a high of eight. Sent the supervisor back home today. She came in working a day and a half, and sent her back to the doctor. She now has bronchitis to go with it and still remain fevered. So it's, we're making them come in the door at one time and not hang around, and then we're spraying everything down. We're running them in and out. We're not letting them congregate with each other. The problem is, the kids on the buses, they have to ride with them, and they walk right past them. My staff's taking the toll out there. We pulled in everybody. I'm letting maintenance help drive. They're mad at me, but I'm giving them masks to wear when we get on the bus.
What would be the critical number before we couldn't pick kids up?
With lots, honestly, because I've got probably four more staff we can bring in and drive. Then we got to look at coaches and people at the bus, you know, CCL certified people at the high school, and there are places that could drive some of our ag people and that kind of stuff. So we're far enough away, I don't see, it would have to really get rid of that. Because the ones now that are out will be coming back next week. Most of them have been out all week, and it's usually four to five days before they really are a lot there. Just pray they don't relapse.
Our nutrition department's got three absent, and health services has two. So that's our staff numbers.
Thank you, sir.
And I do have, just real quick, if you're curious in terms of percentages, the, in terms of percentages, the school with the worst numbers is JMS. They've got 14.83 percent of the students absent.
Stacy.
Operations are made. With our warehouse help, you let me bring in last month. We're in the process of inventorying all the schools, so we've sent out inventory sheets to the principals, which they've issued to teachers, and we'll have to go around and verify some of this stuff and check it out and make sure it's working like we want it to. But we'll have some numbers coming in soon. We'll be able to start passing on to you later. Of course, our main objective is on day-to-day operations is maintenance and keeping the buildings up and warming, cooling, and all that kind of stuff. This weather is, changes every day. I don't know, one day I'm having to run the air, and next day we're having to run the heat, and that's tough. But transportation, like you just heard, we are struggling a little. It's hit the office and shop pretty hard. We had three out in one day there. So, but it's, I seen two of them back, and the other one came back wet, sent her back off because she's so hard-headed, she wouldn't let herself get well. We have a total of two subs available right now, which, that was when I wrote this report. We really don't have any available right now. We've got one person signed up for the next training course starting next month. We are preparing some online training to help, that the staff has to take anyway, as safe pupil, that they can use to help make up time, fob time for all the days we've missed, and also they won't miss any time. So they're getting some extra safety training, which is good. You can always use that. We may be, and we have, the high schools helped us already. Coaches have driven trips for us on field trips where we couldn't get off in time from regular routes to pick them up, so that's been very helpful, too. I don't have the SRO report this month. Chris Leake, you know, is out on some medical leave, and we didn't get it put together. Food service, this is, March 5th through the ninth is National School Breakfast Week, and go buy and support your school. Eat with them. They'll feed you well. It's a good thing. You'll see later on in the agenda, I've got, on transportation, I've got buses to purchase this year. I brought them to you at this time because it worked out so good last year when you let me do this, that we had them on the route when school started instead of November or December. So I brought it to you. It's the same thing we bought last year, 672 passenger buses. It's identical price as the last three years. They've held, maintained it for us. They're working with us real good on that. This is a state bid price, so it's out there for everyone to use the same price, but they're maintaining it, which is good. We do go a little further here, and I commend y'all for that. We are trying to air-condition all the fleet and all that for the kids in the summer, and so you may see another system that buys a bus cheaper, but they don't have that option or a few options like we do on it. So it's things we've chosen here over the years. You want me to segue into the...
Let's go right in, yep.
All right. I want us to bring up, I don't know if we bring them both up or not, but we'll bring up one. Our attendance zone maps, we've been working on with transportation. For example, this is what we're trying to do, and this is how we're trying to balance out kids. We've got both maps. We've got as-is, what we're under now, and we've got what we're proposing to you to vote on. If we go with what we've got proposed now, Tate Elementary will have 376 kids plus the incoming kindergarten class, and if we base it on last year's, they'll end up with about 432 students. Hill City Elementary will have 409 students plus the incoming kindergarten class. If we base it on last year's numbers, it will be around 508 students there, probably a little more, according to what kindergarten does. Hill City, I mean Harmony, has 426 plus the incoming kindergarten, which would put them about 503. So we've got the schools pretty close together in numbers, which is a good thing. Now, you know, Harmony will, has the, and Hill City have the special ed weeks, and the pre-K stuff will be...
Have you got the pre-K at Tate?
That's what I thought. So they'll have a few more numbers there that's not showing right there because pre-K, we can't predict all that kind of stuff. The fifth and sixth grade building will have 717 students, and this is, I don't know how this happened, but seventh grade will have 717 students also. This is based on today's numbers, or this week's numbers that's in school now, as we move them from six to seven, make it seven eight. So that's as close as I can really get to. You know it's going to vary. Every year it changes. All right, the maps, could you get it to come up? It won't show up up there, right?
Hold on, Stacy.
Did you say we have a pre-K at, we have just pre-K right now currently at Hill City, right?
Harmony.
Harmony has pre-K, too?
Harmony has special ed.
They're at special ed.
Special ed only.
Yes.
Are we moving, are we keeping the pre-K at Hill City, and then the one special ed at Harmony? Are we not changing that?
Yes.
They got, they, we looked at one time about including that. Elementary school at Jasper Elementary, they moved into five, six to Harmony, but they have such a much better special ed week, we couldn't really do it because we have so many that use it. That's why we're trying to leave it like that. This is the existing layout of how we are at this time. This is the existing layout of how we are at this time.
Patrick, he just left you hanging. It ain't matter to help you. He'll send you right on off.
Come on down.
What we've done right here is, you see, this was, uh, Hill City, Jasper Elementary, Tate and, uh, what we've had to do on this. Please. We took Harmony and just went up in here into some bigger pockets of subdivisions, all where we don't, don't divide subdivisions and divide roads and that kind of stuff. And absorbed these numbers and through Versatran, we'll let you see this in a minute. With Versatran, we can actually tell you how many kids are on this street and so on and so forth. And that's what we did. We played with it and played with it and played with it. We could get the numbers as easy as we could get. You'll see, this grew up into here. Tate really grew because it had to go all up into here now. And Hill City moved a little over into here, out of here, about as far as it changed it. So it, it's a big zone, there are not as many people there, you know. This is where our crowds at. You know, the problem with Tate too is that also county people can come here if they want to. So we have numbers there, but we have to play with it every year, I'm not sure of. But this is what we're presenting. And once you really can, if you decide this is where you want to go, I'll get these done by an architect and drum it right so we can make them. We put them, we've got them on the computer and we can show them up there, but you can't, you can't read the lines. You can't, it just, because we've scanned and had, I'll, I'll try and make it.
Can you see it on the, like a live page? You can take me in and.
You can see it on our page, okay?
Where is 515?
Well, one of the big things is that none of the kids at any, at Hill City Harmony are Tate, are leaving Hill City Harmony or Tate to go to another school. So, I mean, if they're Kate, if three, they stay where they are. It's only the Jasper's kids that are being routed out. So we're not changing any of the school zones other than incorporating those from Jasper.
Okay, so, so currently at Hill City, there's nobody east of 515?
Correct.
But on, on the new map, there will be some people who are east of 515?
Yep. That's the main difference there at Hill City.
It almost goes back to the way Hill City was originally districted. They, they had that section in the beginning.
You know, you, you do have the policy in place, but you know, it reminds the school they want to, if there's room, then they will transport them if we don't, if they're out of zone. And this is not a district, this is just a zon, attendance zone area. Your districts are, you know, set up different through the county and all that, so. I don't know what else to say about it. This is just the way it was, the way we came up with it, we've looked at it, the way we made the numbers match, that was the biggest thing, not overloading the school with seven, eight hundred kids and having more than two or three hundred kids. You know, Tate has not been earning its state money like it should, it will now. Really help us budget-wise and help the whole system that'll balance things out. Nutrition program should nearly break even now instead of having to pay for itself. And so I think it's, uh, fiscally, I think it's the right thing, but that's y'all's decision for the rest of it.
Well, of course, anybody that's getting displaced is not going to be happy as likely.
Yeah. And you know, you hate it, you hate to move people around, but to use the three schools we have and to put the numbers in, we feel like they can handle it. This is for the coming.
I always say, yes, like in your, in your Harmony, how it goes up and you sort of got some odd shapes top. This is possibly going to be convenience of travel based on areas and then another area.
Exactly. Because we'd have to leave and come out and go back here and get this in. And if we can stay in the same zone, if, if, if transportation, ease to get them to the school, in front of the school in a timely manner, they don't have to ride the bus for it.
I think it's a long time to tell you, your staff, I appreciate it.
Sherry did a great job. Tracy Drang did a great, great job. I was gonna bring them, but I didn't want to contaminate everybody. Tracy, I really did want Sherry here. She can, she can tell you the road names off the top of her head, right? I can't.
Does this change the number of bus drivers we need? Is this a increase or decrease?
If we do double route, no. If we, if we try to eliminate double routes and that's something y'all gotta decide about and start fob time sometime. If we try to start everything closer together, then we will have to hire some people to do it because we can't.
Yeah, that was a question that I'd had in one of the council meetings.
Does that make sense?
Obviously, people are interested and want to know when are we gonna stop, you know, what's gonna be the start?
We have about an hour, more than fifty-five, fifty to minutes an hour between routes to do a double route. Because we have to drop them off, get back out, pick up and come all the way back. Now, we, we do try to make those the shortest routes. We don't let them go all the way here for a double route. We try to keep them in, you know, a general area. But it takes that much time, traffic and, and Dr. Wilson and I have been talking a lot about this. And he would love to be able to start everybody at the same time. We're looking at probably ten more bus drivers to do that. And I talked, the last time I talked, Barry will be this time and I'm gonna come back to y'all with a proposal on bus drivers. We've been talking and working on. And if you go for that, maybe we can start getting some people interested to come in here and we might next year can do that. You know what I'm saying? And start everything closer together and not have to have that hour in between. But it'll just be high school, middle school, an hour different than elementary and five, six. It won't be three different time range or nothing like that. It'll just be one time, you didn't, you'll just start two different times.
How will you determine that? I mean, obviously people, they're already asking me that and I said, I'm sure they are.
They're asking, I'm just trying to.
Will you start, obviously, high school is probably, everything we're doing, high school is gonna be the least impacted as far as construction and stuff like that. And, and their schedule, obviously, tech school schedule has tried to line up with their schedule. Will it be a situation where we start with the high school scheduled times, start, stop times? And then back out of that, backwards? And then how do we determine the, the routes and the time and these?
Talking with Dr. Wilson, we probably won't start the high school first because they actually need to be out first for athletics and different things needing. So then, once we decide that, we come to chat tech and whoever and say, all right, now, we gotta build the schedule with y'all, help us out here. And we'll back into it like you're saying. But, uh, what times, you wanna throw out times? Are you even ready to do that? Or you wanna talk about it some more?
Let's, let's take another week and see if you can get Sherry, Sherry back and that what we're presenting.
Of course, times is gonna be, it is relevant, but it's not relevant for us to, at this point here. What we're gonna do here is not, it's not gonna change.
It's not gonna change the way we're doing it.
If we say we don't like this book all the times, it ain't gonna have anything we can do. So, okay. So it's a challenge, uh, it's gonna be a challenge just to get the times.
Dr. Wilson may be aware of this, I didn't realize it, but we have the greatest difference in topography in this county and any county in the state. Of hills and valleys and different, and then we're spread out. I've never, I mean, we go for a long way. You go from here to here, it's gonna take you an hour and a half to pick up kids and drop them off. Because we can't run the forty miles an hour with kids on there and a stop and a start.
So obviously after tonight, this here's gonna become public, I'll see.
It is right now, Barry's making.
Oh, I see, yeah. And then, and then obviously the next staging will be one of those times.
Absolutely, that's, that's our next, uh, next.
We wanna narrate that as much as we can. And, and when we, it's gonna, that will take a little time. Because we have to go into each area and break this down through Versatran. And it gives us time, but we know we can better those.
And that's, that's a program you have on this list?
It's our routing program and I'm telling you, you can't make it without it. I mean, we can highlight this area right here and I can tell you exactly how many kids in there and just like that. But you gotta go in and pinpoint every one of them first and, and put them in that district before they do all that zone. So there's, there's, that's why I'm telling you, Tracy and Sherry and them were invaluable because I know people that don't have them that can do it, they're calling all the time. Can you help me with Versatran? We've got three down there.
They did a great job.
Well, that's obviously a big, big piece of what we're doing here is getting, getting this and getting it right, so we appreciate that.
Once this is a pre-teen hour, of course, we've already been working on school start times and things like that, but we'll solidify that. But the other thing is we'll start letting parents know what district they're actually.
Yeah, we will send out a letter to everybody. That'll be, I think we were hoping to do that by March, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, we'll actually get started next week.
So I think we'll have twenty of them to, to, we'll be able to give them start, I will be able to give them pick up times and that kind of stuff, yeah. By then, the school year will be able to. Anna, you did a good job, Harvey.
And next we have, are there any questions?
Any other questions?
We have our presentation of our classroom camera system. Brent Coleman, come and share with us a presentation on how to use the, the use of the cameras and what we're recommending.
Hello. I am bringing to you the cameras in the classroom program. We piloted it a year, year and a half ago. We started the whole process and we started out with six cameras at the middle, at both middle schools and six cameras at the high schools. And trained the teachers and initiated a program called Safari Montage. And it allows the teachers to videotape themselves teaching and do some reflection on their teaching and hopefully get, you know, better. You know, identify what their strengths and weaknesses are. And there's a lot of positives about that. So I brought two experts with me tonight. This is Brent and Kevin, and they're gonna give you a quick demonstration or not demonstration, but an explanation of what the program's all about.
Well, thank you, Patrick, and certainly a privilege to be here tonight. And Dr. Wilson, thank you for the invitation. I gotta tell a quick story about Dr. Wilson. I've been doing this about fifteen years and visiting with school leaders across the country, literally coast to coast. But the only time, a principal at that time, it was random, my son was with me, but he took him and let him shoot basketball in the gym the whole time we're in a meeting. So I was like, that's a good man. So I always remember that, Dr. Wilson. It is great to be here tonight. And when you think about district priorities for a school system, and we travel around everywhere again, there are two things that are obvious. And if, if we asked you right now and asked you to, to provide those answers to us, ninety-nine percent sure you would say these two things. There's nothing more important than the safety of your students, the safety of teachers, and then you're trying to maximize student achievement for every kid that comes through the doors of Pickens County. The neat thing about this potential implementation of going district-wide is it does those two things at the same time. And it's the only thing I've been involved with or seen in school systems where technology can impact the two things that are most important. We wanna make sure everyone's safe, they feel secure, and we wanna maximize student achievement. I'm Brent Coleman, I'm with a company called Do Education. Kevin Mitchell's with Audio Enhancement. I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin because he's the product guru and he's gonna walk you through a very quick presentation. So Kevin?
Thanks, Brent. And forgive me because we took a forty-five minute presentation and compiled it into fifteen minutes. So we're gonna fly through this and, and it's not an attempt to rush out of here. If you guys have questions, please stop me, but I'll talk quick because we just wanna respect your guys' time. And I know everyone's busy and wants to get home and away from this blue, probably away from other people. But, so I'll, I'll tell you the story of our company. It's not to bore you, but it's, it's why we're so passionate about what we do. We started forty years ago this year. So in nineteen seventy-eight, a mom started our company because she had two hearing impaired children. So at the time, if you think back forty years ago, if you were hearing impaired, you were either in special education or regular education. There was no I E Ps that exist like they do today. So her idea was she wanted her two boys to be in regular education. They had the same mindset as other students, they just couldn't hear as well. So she built a system and sat on Jeremy and Justin's desk and voila, all the kids around Jeremy and Justin started doing better. All the teachers only wanted to teach in Jeremy and Justin's class because they could talk their normal tone of voice finally. They didn't have to project their voice and everybody in the class could hear them. And since audio's come out, it has been the most research-driven technology in a classroom. It has proven that if you amplify a classroom, amplify a teacher's voice and students can hear better in the classroom, they'll perform better in the classroom. And it's the same philosophy or science of why do we put fifteen lights in this room? Because you want everyone to be able to see, right? But we forget often, all too often about sound in the classroom. So that's the foundation of what we do. About ten years ago, you know, unfortunately, there was a lot of tragic events happening in the United States. And we had a lot of administrators coming to us and saying, my teachers don't wear badges, they won't carry their keys, they don't carry their phones, but they walk around our hallways with your microphone on. Can you build a silent panic button or an alarm into that microphone, kind of like a life alert? That basically is telling the front office that there's an emergency somewhere within that school. So now, on that microphone that they wear, they press and hold a button for two seconds and it alarms that front office box to let the, the district staff know where to respond to, which is really important. And naturally, the evolution led us into cameras because we had so many requests where it was, you respond to a medical emergency a lot different than you respond to a fight that breaks out. You respond to a fight a lot differently than you might to a custody battle or God forbid, an intruder that doesn't belong in the classroom. So one of the main requests was, can we have a camera in that classroom that when they press and activate that button, it turns on this camera? And we can now have eyes in that classroom and know how to adequately respond, uh, respond to whatever the issue might be. So finally, the last, and I know I don't have a fourth bubble, but if there was a fourth bubble, it was really teachers that came to us. And they said, hey, there's cameras in my classroom twenty-four seven, can you turn this on so I can record myself? I wanna be able to watch myself teach. I wanna be able to share lessons with students that can or can't make it to class, hospital homebound students, substitute teaching, I can record lessons ahead of time. So I'll go through some of those examples of how we've gotten to where we are, but that's pretty much the overview of what we're gonna talk about today. So feel free to, to fast forward me through anything that you're not, if you wanted to hear more about and if you need a meter or wind, I'm happy to. Audio, what is the, what does our system do? And the most common misconception of our system is it's made to make teachers louder. If you talk to almost any teacher, they'll tell you they're plenty loud in their classroom. They don't need to be louder, right? But it's not about being loud, it's about giving every kid the feeling as if they were standing right next to the teacher, as if you were getting that one-on-one intimate conversation with the teacher. So the reason I put this slide up is it's not about being louder, it's about being clear to the students so that they understand the contextual clues of the word rather than just hearing the vowel sounds of whatever it is you're projecting. Why is it, and I know you guys don't want a physics lesson, but why is it important? My example would be a fire truck, right? As a fire truck gets closer and closer and closer, what does it sound like? Sounds like it's getting louder and louder and louder. And are they turning up the volume of the fire truck? No. It's just common physics, say, the further you are away from a source, the more sound is gonna dissipate over distance. So if you took that red line and the teacher talked at their normal tone of voice, by the time you get to the back of the classroom, you dip below the noise level in the classroom. So what do teachers naturally do to make sure you don't dip below the noise level? We talk louder. So what are you doing to the kids in the front of the classroom now? You don't change the slope of the line at all, you just talk very loud. So the kids in the front get that feeling as if they're being shouted at or they're being held at. Kids in the back of the classroom, they can hear you now because you're projecting yourself, but what people don't realize is you can only project the sound of a vowel. So if I did my O's and my A's and my I's really, really loud, you could hear it. But if I did the sound of the letter P as loud as I could, it'd be, and T would be. And what does that mean for kids? They hear the vowel sounds. And what do we do as adults? We fill in the blanks with context clues. We use, you know, prior knowledge and all the, the things that we've been taught in life to fill in those gaps. When kids don't have that prior knowledge or they're learning a new language or they're learning chemistry for the first time, they fill in those gaps with the wrong information. And that's why they struggle to be able to learn in the classroom when they can't hear. So that's the, the importance behind audio. One of the added benefits that we never thought of, the effects on a teacher's voice, if any of you have talked before. Teachers are three times more likely than any other profession to suffer some type of vocal strain issues or see a doctor regarding vocal strain. More than singers, more than actresses, actors, whatever it might be, because you're constantly projecting yourself all day long. So this, there's studies behind putting audio in a classroom, teachers being able to talk their normal tone of voice and how that helps with teacher fatigue throughout the day. We hear a lot of teachers saying, it's seventh hour and I have the same energy I had at first hour to teach this class. So rather than them going home and needing that nap at the end of the day, they truly have that extra energy to help them. Overall, what does it mean? And I'll send this all to you guys and again, I'm sorry to fly through this, but it, it, it just means that there's forty years worth of research behind audio in the classroom. If you put audio in the classroom so students can hear better from the best students in the room to the worst students or the, the most underperforming students in the room, everybody will academically increase by, by having audio in the classroom. So that's audio. And again, I gave you the, the story behind SAFE and how it was created, but again, what it does is you press and hold that button. And again, I gave you the story behind Safe and how it was created. But again, what it does is you press and hold that button on the microphone for two seconds. In the classroom, all that changes is that dome sensor, which is on the right-hand side, the hockey puck looking device. What happens when a teacher presses and holds it for three seconds is those three lights will go to red and it lets the teacher know I've successfully sent my signal. And when somebody in the front office has silenced that alarm box that you see there on the left and said that we've seen the signal and seen the alert, two of those lights will go back to green in the classroom to let a teacher know that helps on the way. So as a teacher, you can have the peace of mind because there's no audible signal and you're not trying to cause a large event. You have the visual signal to look up in the ceiling and know, not only did I send my alert, but somebody received it. The good thing about the alarm box is it does not tell you who the teacher is, right? Because most of the time, who cares that Mrs. Jones pressed her button? Because Ms. Jones could be in the cafeteria, she could be at recess, she could be anywhere in the school. It tells you the specific location where the event's taking place. So that as an administrator, not only can you look at your app or your email and click a link and see into the classroom, but you know where to physically respond and where that event's taking place. And I know every time we talk about safety, people jump to the conclusion of, you know, God forbid situations of there being an intruder. But the truth behind it is we much more commonly see this used for medical emergencies. Student has a seizure in a class, there's a custody battle that breaks out, there's a parental situation, there's a fight. And different behavioral issues that are more of your everyday side effects. So what we try to train teachers on is this is, this is not the device you press if Johnny's sleeping in the back of class, right? You want an administrator to come get him. But anytime you truly feel you need another adult in your classroom, this is your life alert. This is your ability to press a button and have somebody respond to that classroom. We showed a video and some of you all might have seen it at the School Board Association. But CNN did a piece on Newton County, Georgia, right after Sandy Hook to talk about cameras in the classroom and the idea of having a safety button and how it would help calm the community. So I'll show you guys this short, it's an edited version, but it's about a minute-long video of CNN.
Teacher Gina Futch at Newton High School in Covington, Georgia says her students are special.
It's the same thing.
Congressional action or what?
But look closely. There's something different about her too.
You wear this around your neck. Tell me about this.
Well, this is a teardrop microphone. And basically it amplifies everything that I say.
Futch were to need assistance or feel threatened, she pressed this button and immediately that camera would snap a photo, which would be emailed to administrators and school resource officers, and then this would happen in the main office.
Attention administrators, I have a silent alarm in room number 44.
The administrators and officers would come to this room and the entire time, the camera is transmitting a live signal and recording video, possibly for an investigation later.
Safety is important for our students. It is our number one priority and we must make sure that we have the latest advances in technology for our children. The enemies that we have are always prepared. We have to be even more prepared so that we can properly address situations and take care of our children.
This is something that helps me and gives me more confidence. It helps me to protect my kids because I know I can get help very quickly.
Victor Blackwell, CNN, Covington, Georgia.
And I'll tell you this final part because this was probably the most difficult evolution of what we tried to do as a company. There's a, there's a certain set of privacy within a classroom. And one of the biggest things that teachers wanted to know is that they truly would be in control. If they could have the ability to use this camera as an instructional tool, they truly wanted to be in control of the camera. And that was one of the biggest hurdles to get over because it was being used for a safety equipment and it was also being used as an instructional tool. So we created a camera that could do both, right? For one side of the house, it would give you every inch of that classroom, use a 360-degree angled lens on the camera so that you could see anything, anywhere in that classroom, God forbid there was an emergency event. As a teacher, you don't always want to see everything in the classroom. You might want to focus in on a single view of just the front of your classroom. Or you might want to take a panoramic view of the front of the classroom and the back of the classroom. Or they more likely than not, take that quadrant view, which you see in the bottom right, and they pan tilt zoom each one of those quadrants into the group work assignments they're doing. Because when you talk to teachers, they're more likely to want to see the students and how their engagement is rather than what the actual instruction that is taking place. So that was one of the important things is we had to create a camera that could do both. It could truly give control to the teachers so that they felt comfortable using this as a tool to help them grow. And we also had to have it cover the security aspect and cover every angle of the classroom. So it does both for you and that's really, really important for your teachers. The other important thing is how easy is it for a teacher to use? And we talk about this all the time. But if it's difficult to do, there's a lot of teachers, there are a large majority that won't ever use it, right? The microphone, you put it on your neck, you turn it on, you change nothing, right? That's the PD that goes into putting on a microphone. You teach the same way you teach. A camera, at the beginning of the year, you can go in and with three clicks, you can schedule your recordings for the entire year. So you don't ever have to go back and touch your platform ever throughout the year. Now, some teachers choose to record every day. They come in every morning and they start their recordings and they stop it at the end of the period and they share just that lesson. But it's as intricate and as easy as you want it to be. So as a teacher, you have full control of how difficult you can make this or how easy you can make it. You could schedule it Monday to record every day from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM or 10:00 AM to record your first hour class and save it as your first hour class. We talk about what the advantages are for teachers. We've heard thousands of stories throughout the years and we've tried to simplify it into three buckets of what teachers talk about. And the first one is being your obvious professional learning, right? How do we make the teachers in Pickens County the absolute best teachers that they can be, right? You can't recruit teachers from all over the nation to come teach in Jasper. But we can take the teachers that we've recruited and help them improve and help them grow into being the best teacher they can be. So that's that, that first bucket. The anywhere, anytime learning is your, you know, your obvious hospital homebound students or your student athletes that leave on Friday at noon because they're heading to a, to a football game or whatever it might be. But snow days, right? Who would have thought we were having so many snow days? But the idea that a teacher can record themselves and have content available to students when they're ready to learn and when they're able to learn is very, very important. And then the last section is safety, security and discipline. And I'll let Brent steal the thunder a little bit on that one. But you can imagine, you put a camera in a classroom, what do you think students do? They act a little better, right? I mean, teachers, we act a little better because the idea, the philosophy of it being there, whether someone's watching it or not, you tend to sit up a little straighter and think mom and dad might be popping you upside the head when you get home at night. So anyways, it's a, it's a, it's an impressive, impressive thing. So I'll start with professional learning and, and I'll start with something I think that hits home with everybody. But you think about athletics, right? Or you think about medical procedures or our military. What does everybody do after games? In your high school games, what do they do after games? What do they study? Video, all right? And the idea for us is, why is education one of the few places in this world that's left that people don't watch video? That we don't self-improve and watch ourselves teach and try to grow from what we see in our own videos? When our coaches look to help us as teachers, what are they to look at? You know, if they're not sitting in the back of the class and trying to take notes on what you're doing, how are they able to see the true lesson that's taking place? And the answer is video, right? And that's how you're gonna improve those teachers. So where do you start? And the answer is, teachers have to see themselves teach. If you don't become comfortable seeing yourself teach, it's very unlikely that you're gonna share it with a coach or a mentor or a peer. So that's always the starting point. And I'll tell you, younger teachers, they tend to be so used to the Snapchat and Facebook and Twitter, you know, world that they've become more comfortable seeing themselves on camera than, than it's even, it's not even that an issue. So from there, where do they go? They slowly become more comfortable and start sharing those videos with their peers. That's naturally the second evolution. From there, it's the virtual coaching. It's the idea that I'm allowing someone to give me constructive criticism on how to improve. And then the final, you know, part of this is teacher evaluations. The person that holds me accountable, I'm willing to share this video with my administration and have them give me feedback on the different areas that I can improve. So the idea around Georgia in the, in the 50-some districts that have cameras is, we want to give our teachers the ability to grow. We don't want to check a box saying they're doing their job or not doing their job. We want to use the video to truly show them the room for improvement that they have as an educator. And that's where the teacher evaluation piece comes in. I'll send you all this study. Best But Forward is a study that was done by Harvard. And the idea was if we allow teachers to submit a video of themselves, will we truly just get a dog and pony show? Or do we get a real reflection of their, their lesson? And the answer was, it's truly a great reflection of their lesson. And on average, how many times do teachers record themselves before they submit the video? 13. And what do they do every one of those times? Watch the video, improve, right? So you're truly getting the benefit of doing an evaluation by allowing teachers to record themselves and submit something they truly feel good about rather than it being a lesson where, you know, you popped in and it may or may not have been their best day. I'll show you guys this small video on Harvard and again, I'll fly through it.
It's neurologically impossible to get somebody to remember something they didn't notice in the first place. Once you watch a number of videos, it's clear that the teachers who are struggling are struggling because they're not noticing things that are going on in the classroom. It's not because they're willfully ignoring things. It's because they're not noticing things.
Best But Forward Project is a three-year impact evaluation of video technology and classroom observations. We want to know, does video technology make classroom observations better? Does it make it more cost efficient, more meaningful for teachers, easier for administrators to do in a busy work day? We want to know, do ultimately the students of these teachers grow more than teachers who are going through in-person classroom observations? Principals are sort of newly given this responsibility of evaluating every single teacher multiple times a year. So in some of our districts, they're required to be in every teacher's classroom six times. If you have a staff of under teachers, that's an enormous burden on an already busy school day when you're responsible for so many other things. What video allows principals to do is watch lessons at more convenient times of the day.
Showing them your written notes from a classroom observation is just not gonna be an effective way to get people to recognize things that they should be noticed.
I think there's a strong role for video in, in observations and in some reflective practice. I think the key aspects that a lot of teachers are trying to capture is how engaged are my students? So really trying to find a way to look at them when they're actually in the moment. It can be hard to gauge what every student in the classroom is doing. I also hear a strong desire to use it as a team tool. Most professions use video in some capacity, whether it's a medical team that uses it in the form of medical rounds and kind of reviewing practices that happen during a surgery or working with a patient. Professional athletes, whether it's that reflective practice of, oh, I'm keeping my elbow up too high, I'm doing my windup or whatever it is. Just looking back at yourself and trying to find ways that you can continue to grow and be the best professional you can be.
One of the reasons why we're so excited about the Best But Forward Project is it's obvious that you need to change teaching if you want to change student outcome. Video can allow you to do that.
And I think in a nutshell, the point of that video is just, it's not the silver bullet, right? But it gives your teachers, it gives your administration the tool that they need to truly improve upon what they do. So I think it's just a great, great example. The anywhere, anytime learning, I'll fly through this. But again, it's the idea, if you go to conferences and I go around the country literally doing this. But everybody talks about anywhere, anytime learning. They talk about how do you get content to a student when they're ready to learn? And whether that means they were in class and they're reviewing it when they get home, or they were never in class and are seeing it for the first time. How do you get that content and that teacher to be available to a student when they're ready to learn? And that's truly what the camera's about. So whether it's hospital homebound, your flip classrooms, your bad weather days, parent help, you know, teaching parents how to teach fractions, which we do a lot different now than when we all went to school. So it's all of that. And how do you get that lesson to a teacher or student that they're able to learn? I'll show you this quick video. This was a Gwinnett teacher and I won't show you the whole thing. But it really gives you the idea of what the camera looks like and also what the PowerPoint or the content that the teacher's delivering, how it looks as it's paired with that video.
Equals liability plus owner's equity, I'm gonna abbreviate. Okay? This is your accounting equation. This equal sign must and always stay true. Everything that's on the left must always equal.
And essence of time and sanity, y'all. I'll skip that for you guys. I'm sure you don't want an accounting lesson. One of the requests of us was, how does this work? How does the implementation work? And like I said before, we're in nearly 50 districts with cameras in the state of Georgia alone. Some from Newton County with 1,600 classrooms and 1,600 cameras to Gwinnett County that has 16,000 classrooms and audio in the majority of those rooms and cameras in 1,000 of their rooms. So we've had a lot of experience with this and it's almost always about that 45-day timeline. And that's very similar to what we put together here for you. I won't bore you with all the details, but from kickoff call to pre-programming, the technical stuff, shipping equipment, installation, and then coming behind and commissioning the product to make sure it's working as expected for you all, between all of those steps would be about that 45-day timeline. From there, what do we do? The most important thing for us as a company is professional development. I told you the microphone's very simple. You get it on your neck and you turn it on. But half of the professional development is teaching teachers why it's important. Because if they don't understand why they should be using it, then they don't understand why they're putting it on their neck every day. Same thing with the camera. If they don't understand all the different things that you can do with a camera, then why would they ever turn it on? Or if administration doesn't understand all the benefits it can provide to how they manage their teachers, then they don't ever turn the camera on or use it. So professional development is very important for us. What we've done is we've included three days per site. And we do it as a 101, a 102, and a 103 training where we come back and we're kind of giving the teachers and the administration another step in the right direction every time. From there, we do ongoing support and feedback. We continue to monitor the cameras and do the technical work behind the scenes to keep them online with Joey and Patrick's team. So it's a very thorough process. And if you guys have questions about that, please, please feel free to pick our brain. I'll let Brent finish up with this, the security and discipline.
If I could ask you a question?
Sure, please.
Do you have a similar product developed for buses and bus drivers?
We don't. And there's, I'll answer it two ways. We don't because there's so many very, very good companies out there that specialize just in bus camera videos. There's also not a network in a bus. They'd have to record to some type of recording device within the bus or over wifi. So it's not our specialty. We very much stay focused on K-12 only and classrooms only. So I hope that helps.
I have a question.
Sure, please.
I'm sorry.
We've got a good system, very clear system on buses with sound.
I knew we were getting upgraded.
Yeah, we've upgraded that greatly.
And the teacher myself too, I wanted to ask kind of a question.
Please.
With the lessons, if we recorded them, how many, is there a certain limit? Can you record every day? How much space do you have?
So we don't limit teachers. What we tell them is that if you decide, if you want that video, you want to keep it permanently, you have to go in and check mark it and say, save this video permanently. If you don't, you'll have 30 days and then it falls off the server. So it doesn't mean you only get 30 days of video. It means you can store as much as you want, but if you don't save it, it's gonna delete after 30 days.
And then would I have the ability, if I really liked this lesson, to email it to my students?
Yep. And you share it as simply as sharing a link. And then what it does for your students and the great thing for the community is that those videos are still protected as Pickens County property. The student would have to have a login to log into the platform and he would have to have then, or he or she would have to have rights to view that video as well.
What a great resource for parents.
It's awesome.
Especially in the common format.
Yep. I say this, not just because I work for the company and I was talking earlier to the guys, but there will be a camera in every, I mean, it makes too much sense, whether it's ours or some other brand that comes out.
I mean, what a great thing for kids absent. I mean, that's being able to send a link.
Absolutely. Yep.
I just want to take a couple of minutes and finish that last bucket of safety, security and discipline. And we talked about on the front end, there's nothing more important than safety. And when you put cameras in a classroom, guess what happens? Discipline improves and automatically becomes safer. Here's a case study from Covington, Georgia. They had over 1,000 discipline referrals at this middle school. They implemented PBIS. And then behind that, they put in cameras. So discipline referrals dropped by 720. And what does that mean when you reduce discipline referrals by 720? The data says you buy back 540 hours of instructional time. What does that mean for your teachers? Now, does teacher want to teach or be in there filling out discipline info? So very powerful. Overall, in Newton County, discipline referrals dropped by 43%. We were, some other members of our team, they did a presentation today in North Carolina. And the superintendent in his district, their discipline referrals dropped by 75%. I was with a principal in Jefferson County, Georgia, last week at Gail. He told me his discipline referrals dropped by nearly 40%. So again, we all act different when there's a camera and we know it's on and someone's watching. And then finally, you know, we're in God's country. I live in Canton and you're in a great place. But crazy things happen everywhere and people get accused of crazy things. And I could spend another 30 minutes tonight telling you stories how the camera has protected teachers. And in today's world, a teacher is guilty until proven innocent. And there's so many times where this camera, being in the classroom, the teacher is able to prove they were innocent. And they didn't do that heinous thing maybe to a female student. I was in Gas in Alabama on Monday and in that school that day, a female teacher was accused of shoving a student to the ground. Well, they went to the video and it didn't happen. And so case closed, no investigation, no he said, she said. And so case closed, no investigation, no he said, she said. So at the end of the day, there's nothing like for a teacher just having that camera to protect them in case of the false accusations. And then as a school district, if someone, if a teacher does do something heinous, you certainly want to know that. You want that information as quickly as possible.
So the camera is only recording when you press the button to record, right?
It's only, sorry, in your setup, it's only recording when the teacher chooses to record. Correct.
And just from a teacher standpoint, I think from y'all's presentation I saw before, that recording is only shared if the teacher chooses to share it.
Correct.
So it's not that this is, administrator can just pop in on the camera and watch it anytime, the teacher has to allow them to...
And that's true, and ultimately, that's a district decision of how you want to implement it. Completely up to you all and policy.
So it'd probably be who's the teacher to keep the camera rolling at all times?
Absolutely.
And then if the day of nothing happened, then the...
And that's, and that's what we're seeing, is teachers are quickly learning to record every day, all day, even if it's optional. In some districts, they say, hey, we put cameras in your classroom, you're going to record all day, every day. Really depends up to you all.
When we were at the conference with Newton County, I know there were three or four instances where the teachers chose to record all day, and there were at least three instances where they were accused of something that did not occur.
If you choose to record all day, are you able to clip it where you want to clip it, so you only want to send that amount?
You can segment it, you can chapter, and you can add metadata to it. And it is getting to the point where you'll be able to have closed captions. So probably by summer, you'll be able to close caption the videos, so if you're talking. And you'll be able to translate it to native language. I don't know if you have any ELL students, but it'll even have that ability. So along with the content that's being delivered in the video, you could have the ability to close caption.
Obviously, there was a couple of different, showing the teacher teaching, so that was one view of the camera. The teacher has the ability to change the view from 360, so it's multifaceted and that...
Exactly. You can choose between any one of those three views, the dual panoramic, the quadrant view, or the single view. And each one of those views is pan tilt zoomable to any point of the classroom. So there's no fixed view or fixed answer for a teacher. They get to choose whatever they...
Is that a fairly easy process? So that you hand out a test, and now it becomes a monitor for looking at your students all the time? I mean, that's what you do, sit there, I guess, obviously, and look at the...
Yeah, you can, so each quadrant, let's use that one as an example, because it's probably the most difficult. Each quadrant has an up, down, left, right arrow, and then a zoom in, zoom out, and you can have that ability. So as long as you know your ups, downs, lefts, and rights, you can do it. And you brought up the recording. I'll tell you, you know, when we talked to teachers five years ago, it was a bigger issue than it is today. Today, every teacher we talked to says they have 30 cameras in their classroom already, and every kid has a cell phone in their pocket. And as much as that's become a norm, and we see things on the news, that 30-second clip, teachers have become more and more open to the idea of having their camera running all day, every day. Because why wouldn't you want your story? You know, why wouldn't you want the 10 minutes leading up to the event, rather than just the 30-second clip? You know?
Any other questions? We greatly appreciate the chance to be here, and I'll wrap it up by reminding you again of what's most important. It is safety, it's student achievement. And so I know when you make an investment, you want a return on investment. Hopefully, we've been able to show you some of the ways that this will make a positive impact on your school. So thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, John. And now, Mr. Young.
I want to, I want to start tonight by talking to you and saying that I want to thank Ombudsman for the services provided to the Pickens County school system over the years. It's been a valuable asset to us. But as the chief of student development, I would be remiss if I did not make you aware of the fact that their contract is an automatic renewal contract. And if action's not taken on our part, by the end of March, that contract will automatically roll over. And so I have a responsibility to you, the board, and to the students of Pickens County as chief development officer. If I think there might be a better alternative out there, I think it's my responsibility to make you aware of that. And so I just wanted to talk to you a couple of minutes tonight about Ombudsman and about an alternative that might be available for your consideration, which is to bring those services in-house. And so the contract itself with Ombudsman is, costs us $163,590 per year, and that reserves us 30 slides for students, grade six through 12. And Ombudsman serves those students, and then from 8:00 to 12:00 o'clock, they serve the middle school students, and then from 12:00 to 3:00 o'clock, they serve the high school students. And that's all the service those students receive. Our high school students are with Ombudsman for three hours a day. And while Ombudsman has done a good job for us, I really believe that if we bring those services in-house, we will gain advantage from that. And one of those advantages will be that we will be able to service those students for the entire school day, instead of a high school student for three hours and a middle school student for four hours. And that will allow us to capture all of that FTE money, right? Now, we're not capturing the entire FTE per student, we're just capturing for the hours that they're at Ombudsman. And so if we brought that in-house, that would allow us to capture all of the FTE money. Just as importantly, and I know money is, money is an important consideration, that $163,590, when you calculate that out, just the annual cost to us would pay for a teacher and parapro with a little bit of money left over. That doesn't even take into consideration the FTE money that we'd be recapturing there. So financially, I think we would be in good shape. But the most important thing to me, and I know, I know an important consideration for the board and for the superintendent, and that's why we've discussed this, is that it's our responsibility to make sure that we're providing services to all of our students to the best of our abilities, whether they be in our general ed classrooms, whether they be our special ed population, any of our exceptional children, or whether they be those students that have made a bad decision and have ended up at Ombudsman, which it's purely a punitive setting, where they come in and they sit in front of a computer. I'm not entirely certain that those students are being served as well as they could be if they were, they were brought in-house. And a very wise person, Kristy sitting back there, I think she said it best when she said, if we have a student that can't read, we teach them how to read. If we have a student that can't do math, we teach them math. But we take these Ombudsman students that have had bad decisions behaviorally, we take those students and put them in a room and set them in front of a computer. And we don't address that behavioral aspect. And so that's why we have a high rate of recidivism with Ombudsman. We have that same group of students that find themselves in there over and over and over again because of the behavioral problem, whether it's a bad decision or whatever it may be, that Ombudsman does not address that. They're doing their best to get those students in there and to get them in front of a computer and manage them for those three hours. And I truly believe that the staffs that we have in place in Pickens County can do a much better job with those students, whether they be special ed students, I think we can service them better. And whether they be behaviorally motivated in their problems, I think we can deal with that in a better manner. With, Kristy has talked to me about restorative justice, a missing piece of the puzzle, where you focus on the behavior that got that student into that alternative setting, and you work on dealing with that so that that student does not continue to make those bad decisions. So I think we can do a better job, and I think the numbers bear that out when you look at last year's milestone test scores. Now, I know those, it's a very transient population of students. They are in and out as they serve their term. But we have a lot of students in Ombudsman told this to me and Dr. Wilson in a meeting a couple of days ago, can't get the students to do anything. They just won't do anything. And the milestone scores tend to bear that out. When you look at the 1617 data, they had 55 students that school year that took a milestone. 32 of them failed. 32 out of 55 failed their milestone test. Of those that passed, 13 passed with a C, and 10 passed with a B. There were no As on milestones. And those scores come back to the schools that student attends in Pickens County. So we're taking a hit there as well. Now, like I said, I know it's a transient population, and I know those students are in and out, and you might say, well, it's unfair if they're only in Ombudsman for 10 days. It's unfair. But the issue there, or the answer that I have of that, is that even though it's a transient population, if those students were in-house, we would be able to make that transition to the alternative setting more smoothly, so that there's no loss of instruction. We would be able to control the teacher that's in that room with them. We would put a good qualified person in that room doing that job, so that when they make that transition from the regular classroom setting to the alternative school setting, you know, the transition in terms of educational value should not, we shouldn't miss a beat, to be honest with you. We should be able to move them into that alternative setting. We should be able to continue to progress with them while they serve their time there, and then they make that transition back to the classroom, and they should be performing the equivalent of their peers on their milestones, which they are not doing. And so, and I think I have a responsibility to you, the board, and to the superintendent just to let you know, and it's your decision, but to let you know that I do believe that we could, we could perform the functions of that alternative school more effectively and more efficiently, and we could service our students more effectively and more efficiently. And the money in terms of the FTE, we would recapture, and in terms of the money that we would not be spending on the renewal of this contract, the money, the expenditure would not be an issue. And so I just wanted to present that information to you quickly. I know everybody's tired. I just wanted to present that to you quickly. I know the superintendent may be, may be going to make a recommendation to you tonight, but that was just a little bit of food for thought there. We also envision moving forward quickly, taking it beyond just a punitive alternative school, to an alternative and a virtual school, and looking at expanding that in the coming years, and turning it into something that's not just punitive, but also services more of our students that the regular classroom setting just does not work for. We have a large population of those. Many of them end up right here across the street at Mountain Ed going to school at night, which is fine. There's absolutely nothing wrong with Mountain Ed. But we have a lot of students that we are servicing that are not in the best position to be the most successful that they can be. And we have a responsibility to try to do something about that. And I think this could become that as we grow it over the years. So just something to think about. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item is, we have an agreement now with Pickens County Sheriff's Office, and we, with our contract with them, they provide us school resource officers and the equipment for that. And we've got a great relationship with them. For you is a letter outlining some potential possibilities of leasing some, leasing some space at Jasper Middle School campus starting this June. And I'd just like to present this to you tonight with the intentions of them bringing a formal contract to us for a decision at another time, but to let you know that this is forthcoming and supportive of it. Any questions about...
You just presented that for us to look at now and tell us what potentially could be coming and have us look at this.
Yes, and I'm, with the understanding that that is something that we're looking going down that road with, with actual contract coming shortly. And with that, that concludes my report tonight. With the exception of one thing, Mr. Wallace.
Yes, sir.
Tell us about our girls.
We have a girl that's at the fall, one tonight, and she's playing at 7:00 tomorrow for the region championship. They also, win or lose tomorrow night, will host first round in state. I think it's been probably 15 years since that's happened.
Awesome. So tomorrow night's at Southeast Whitfield as well?
Southeast Whitfield, 7:00.
Very good. Awesome. Awesome. Wonderful. Congratulations. All right, with that, that concludes my report.
Okay. Before we go into action items, I'd like to ask Stacy a question, going back into, as we got the information regarding the flu and all of this that we're having to look at. What is, what is our protocol as a district when we have this? Obviously, this isn't something brand new. We're always surprised when it happens to you, but do we have a protocol in place that at this point in time, you know, we go in on Friday afternoon and we do some kind of extensive clean? What do we do to try to stem this off before it gets farther? Or do we have a protocol?
We've kind of gone hand in hand with Kim Parker, the nurse, our lead nurse, and she's advised us on some things that she would like. So what we've done is we've bought tons of wipes and sprays and stuff, and we've been bringing them to the schools and passing them out for the teachers to have in their rooms. I know I've heard a lot of teachers are, when the class is over, they hand the kids a wipe, and they wipe their own desk down with that wipe between classes and everything else. We, over the weekends, if we have a particular area or a particular school or a particular pod or something, we will set off hospital-grade bombs in there, and then you have to go back in and wipe them down later. Just being, we've even brought, you know, we hadn't had a lot of hand sanitizers in schools anymore because it seems like that changes with the dispensers every year, and then you have to buy a new dispenser. So we've been passing out some of that kind of stuff, too. And some, and I know the teachers and the principals and I've been bringing their own, and we've just been trying to be really cautious with it. I don't know that we have a protocol for that. I have never seen it if we do. But dealing with Kim and, and Dr. Wilson and the central office staff, that's what we decided to do, is just be more vigilant about passing out wipes and sprays and following up behind problems.
Is there anything extra cleaning crews can do, especially at JMS and Harmony where it seems to be the worst?
I'm scared JMS is more of a age problem. I would say, I had some water leaks this week with that torrential downpour, that I found some things that I didn't know were going on in the building. You don't find stuff like that sometimes, do you? And it was just some, where the air conditioning units hooked to the walls, some of those areas were just, they were saturated and absorbing the water, so that's just not good and stuff like that. There's, you know, if we keep, if we do anything to the building that's kept for our use, we're going to have to really spend a lot of money on it. And we've known that. We've been talking about that for years, why you're closing it out, too. Yes, they, what they do, and I will, I will recommend it to them and call them and ask them, they'll go through each room and they'll do an extra clean on it, and they'll set the bombs off. They have them, too. They have the hospital-grade disinfectant bombs. It works. I mean, it does help. I know when we, we do, when we have the lice problems and all, they'll go in and do an extra clean, and they, they don't, they take the bags and actually destroy them, throw them away. But vacuum cleaners, they won't just, you know, use them from room to room and all. There's a lot of precautions, and they've been, they've been really trying to help us get some of that stuff around to those people and all. Yeah. The problem is, it's usually from a cough or a sneeze, and that's how you, you know what I'm saying? It travels through the air, and that's what Kim was telling us. It's just really hard to stop it. Washing your hands is the best thing, and covering your mouth and face when you are having those problems. It's not a good situation.
Passing a mask. That's all it is. Just give them all a mask.
Right here, Martha said that Kim passed this on to her, and she said, what we are doing at this particular time, they're, they continue sending out the messages, the prints and the print letters and media and the progress they've been using, and they're targeting audiences of the staff, students, and families, and they're talking about the flu. And they're sending out educational things every day to these people through the, through our emails and stuff. So, you know, it's, it's up to us individually. This, I can pass this out to you, this is what she had been sending out. She said it out first. She's been sending these out for weeks.
Well, one of the issues is, we can sanitize that entire building, but you let a couple of kids come back in, it's contagious, it starts all over again. And the problem also is, is that according to Kim and CDC, they're contagious 24 to 48 hours before symptoms even appear, and then another 24 hours after symptoms end. So it's that contagious period that they're not aware of, that they're passing it around. And it may take time to heal that.
I wiped out Walmart and Home Depot with Clorox wipes and, and it lasts this year. We've probably bought three times what we've ever bought in past... We've probably bought three times what we've ever bought in pass foul. We'll keep doing it. I mean, that's all we can do to solve cases.
Thank you, Stacy.
Okay. Next, we'll move us into action items. Uh, first, approval of school names for the fifth, sixth and seventh and eighth grade schools. Dr. Wilson, what's your names?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, um, take the opportunity that because it will be a new school, uh, with new kids coming and some new staff coming, uh, I'd like to change the name of Pickens County Middle School to Pickens Junior High School. And then I would also like to, in, in talking with some, um, third grade students and fourth grade students, and, uh, they thought that, and, uh, well, the, going up to the, uh, fifth and sixth grade school, they did not want anything to do with elementary. Uh, they thought they were going to middle school, so I would like to recommend that we name the, the fifth and sixth grade school Jasper Middle School. That would be my recommendation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the new school names as presented.
I second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Wong. Seconded by Miss Finley. Any discussion? All in favor?
I do have a question. Are they gonna change their mascots?
They can keep the mascot, but they'll always be dragons all the way down.
So, once again, all in favor? Five. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't give you that time to discuss that. Next, uh, the approval of the presented school attendance zones. Do I hear a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the attendance zones as presented. I'll second that.
Motion by Miss Lewis. Seconded by Miss White. Any discussion on that?
Uh, the only discussion I would have is really just as we notify the parents to please include in that notification a copy of our new policy about, um, choice.
Absolutely. Yeah. We will. So as we approve that. All those in favor of that? Five. None opposed. Next will be the approval of the classroom camera system.
I'll make a motion we approve the classroom camera system as recommended.
Motion by Mrs. White. I hear a second.
I'll second. I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. White. Seconded by Miss Finley. Is there any discussion on that? I do have a couple of questions, uh, in regards to that. Uh, cost, obviously this is plus dollars. And, and I, I think that as we are looking at our improvements and all of our changes, we have everything lined up, so it's a no debt situation. Okay? Does this fall into that same category so that?
Yes. It is one of the items that you're in the board retreat, uh, that's on the cash flow. Um, you know, we worked it in with estimated dates. Now we've been, the dates round, but it is more the items that was presented.
And then obviously with everything that we've got going on, how impactful will this be to our teachers, through training and stuff like that? What, what will, what will we see or what will our people see in regards to this with everything else going on? And obviously installation of it is gonna be prime time when you have everything else going on. But what will we see there, uh, in, so that the people in the school will know what's gonna be expected of them? We saw the timeline of that, but will that be very impactful? Where will these days come when the teachers need these training? Is that something that we have planned out to, uh, make it pretty easy?
Where the process is setting down and actually laying out a timeline on each individual school themselves. Uh, of course, we're gonna be very slow at putting it, uh, into, uh, Pickens Junior High as we also start that renovation process. Uh, we also have, because of our, uh, the ramp, uh, equity between schools, we, we have to, because of that, we, we really have to start with our elementary schools first. So it, uh, and, and most of the things are not gonna change a whole lot of, that the three elementary schools are just being influx more, influx more people in classrooms. So, uh, that won't be as big a deal and we'll, we'll start this, this summer and start getting those classrooms ready so we can start teaching teachers how to use them. And then we'll, from there, we'll go to, uh, the high school and also to Jasper Middle, Pickens, Pickens Junior High as we do the renovation with that.
And what about, what about the outcomes? Obviously, when you spend money on something, you want to know that what you have purchased is actually achieving. Now, I would say this, anytime you can, you could stem off a lawsuit, I mean, that's, we know how that could happen like that. So, but as far as, how will these be monitored for like student achievement and stuff like that? Will we know the money we spend here is, is really worth what we're gonna do?
There's a couple of things that will happen pretty quickly. Uh, of course, teachers can use them and they can submit, uh, status approved, they can submit one video for one of their formal observations, which, which will help them and also help the administration. But the other big thing is, uh, as we are looking at going into a virtual, uh, academy future, uh, movement for our school system, this will be the basis of a lot of those virtual lessons, uh, that we would be using that not only for hospital homebound, but also for kids that are out sick or, or snow days, but, uh, also to a full-fledged virtual academy down the road where kids can take the entire class online. Uh, so, but this will be the content of some of those virtual classes.
But was your question like, are we gonna have data of how it's impacted our student achievement? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that was, that was the, uh, the initial question, obviously. Referrals, just like, you know, that, we would be seeing the same thing they're seeing there. That's what we would anticipate. That would be very easy to track there. You know, student achievement probably my main thing, you know, on how we would tie it to.
Probably the hardest thing probably to, everything is, put a number on.
But I, I would be.
But we all know that referrals go down and student achievement goes up. And that's, that's always the way. I mean, if we have less discipline problems, there's gonna be more learning taking place.
And how easy if a child really didn't understand something, how easy it would be when they're doing their homework and stuff, go back to it and get their presentation.
And that'll take a, that'll take time. The teachers will have to get used to recording theirselves and posting that out there for that to be available to some kids. So hopefully if we train them well enough, you know, they'll be comfortable with it and they'll be, be willing to do it.
And the other big thing is, uh, you know, if they're really archived correctly, if they're teaching fractions this year, next year, and they teach fractions, they can use themselves. So, uh, they, they'll have two teachers in the classroom helping the kids at the same time.
I also just confirm that the installation will happen after hours. It will not impact the school day.
Yeah, well, yeah, impact I was talking about though. That's what I'm talking, as for the, uh, classroom, classroom instruction, it will not interfere at all.
Can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
Would, would the students be able to remove an absence from their record perhaps if they demonstrated that they watched the video and if they had mastered that material for that day? Could that impact their?
It's a possibility. I mean, we do need to look at, I know of some of the guidelines, uh, especially for snow days and things like that, 95% of the class has to observe it for that time. But what it could also do though is it, uh, as far as ISS and OSS, uh, it could almost do away with those because it would still be delivering the lesson by the classroom teacher, it'd just be at a different location. So e- even some of those areas that would help, uh, that kids actually have the instructional part of it instead of sitting there.
I was just wondering, some students for illness and other reasons sometimes rack up absences quicker than they really realize them. Sometimes the court gets involved and perhaps this could help as well.
You know, ultimately down the road, what I really have to see is a full-fledged virtual academy where a child wanna take a particular class strictly online, uh, we can offer that availability to that child.
I still like a teacher in class, but like, under the situations that we're under right now, I would love for my kids to have EOCs, you know, before decent, before Christmas and all this time we've missed. And then AP classes now that they need, I'd like for them to be able to access a class when we missed all these days. It would make a difference, absolutely make a difference in student achievement.
And as a parent trying to help, help a child, you know, they teach things differently than when we were in school. So it's, it would be handy to be able to look and see how the teacher presented the material, because sometimes looking at your child's notes. That teacher was, that's what I mean. I realize I graduate with a second grade education because I was asked that one, my kids got to sell it. That's where they went behind my twelve grade education, you know, so.
Any other discussion about that there? For a vote?
I, I think this could be very positive. We would use it to its extent. What it can do, I think it'd be great.
And I'll look forward to hearing the results next year.
Absolutely. All those in favor? Five. None opposed. Next will be the, uh, non-renewal of the ombudsman contract. Do I hear a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we do not renew the ombudsman contract.
I'll second. Motion by Miss Finley. Seconded by Mr. Wong. Is there any discussion on that? None, all in favor? Five. Uh, next will be a approval of the PCMS sixth grade out of state field trip. Dr. Wilson, you want to say just a few? Ms. Wong, does she have anything on that?
It's the basic field trip at JMS, so if there's more, our sixth grade teachers here at the house questions.
I would recommend it.
Do I hear a motion to approve that out of state field trip?
I'll make a motion to approve the sixth grade trip. Pickens County Middle Schools.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. White. I hear a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Seconded by Miss Finley. Is there any discussion? None, all in favor? Five. None opposed. Next will be the approval of the, uh, buses. That was discussed earlier. And it was, how many buses? Six buses, two passenger buses.
I'll make a motion to approve the bus purchases presented.
I'll second that. Motion by Mr. Wong. Seconded by myself. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Five. Oh. Next will be the approval of the 2018 complete policy review. The rescinded policies revised and the new policies that started this basically in December when this began. We completed that. Shall I have a motion for that?
Make a motion to approve the 2018 complete policy review.
Motion by Mrs. White. I hear a second. Second. Seconded by Mr. Wong. Is there any discussion on that? We'll say that, uh, we, uh, really dug into that. But we did do it. I think we cleaned up so much there that's gonna make things so much easier for our policy guys. So, and I think it's a long-term commitment.
And I know a lot of people didn't, didn't take the opportunity to view what was changing. Uh, and I guess what's out there now, it's gonna be harder for people to realize what changed without the, the lines going through it. But, uh, it definitely, I think, is much improved.
Absolutely.
Much clearer and easier to read.
As she said, it was easier to read. I said, I like working at midnight.
But we did accomplish a lot.
It was on its own, yes.
It was.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Five. None opposed. Motion carries.
And we're not gonna waste all that time spent.
Next, approval of the minutes from the January 11th regular board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 11th regular board meeting.
Motion by Mr. Wong.
I'll second.
Seconded by Miss Lewis. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. None opposed. Motion carries. Uh, last item. Is that correct? Yes. Approval of surplus. And that was pretty lengthy surplus.
Is that a sign that the teachers are realizing that there may be some moving? Time to clean the house?
Well, you haven't seen anything yet because they've been in the, under the field house and everything else, getting all this for stuff that, uh, has, has been archived for years and should've been, gone a long time ago.
Do I have a motion to approve that surplus list as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the surplus list as presented.
Motion by Miss Lewis. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Miss White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. None opposed. Motion carries. Next, board comments. Any additional comments that will come to that?
Um, I just wanted to kind of let everybody know that, that when we adjusted the agenda so that executive session came earlier on the agenda, our intent was that you would not have to sit and wait for us to do, um, executive session later in the meeting. So, um, we need to tweak our adjustment a little bit, but I think by the next meeting, um, you will understand that you don't necessarily need to be here as early as you are to sit through, um, sit through that. Hopefully, executive session, um, was a little longer than usual tonight. We apologize for that. We had, um, a lot of, a lot of personnel stuff, so.
Well, another, another goal of us changing that is to put a time constraint on us, so.
So how's that working for you so far?
It didn't work out so well tonight, but hopefully.
We actually did pretty good for how much we had to talk about that.
So hopefully in future meetings, it will.
It will be better, yeah.
You know, because we all think that we used to go in there and we don't look at the clock. We look at the clock. And especially if we put it so that the meeting's supposed to start at 6:30, we're really looking going, all right, we've gotta get this done at 30 minutes. So hopefully it will, it will shorten that and, you know, we've discussed trying to come up with a way of, so, you know, you guys don't have to show up at 6:00. Well, you know, I guess it's a good social time, you know, to get to sit and talk with each other. But, uh, you know, we don't want to inconvenience anybody any more than we have to.
Now, all the comments? Next item is to adjourn. Do I hear a motion?
Stay well.
I would be glad to make a motion to adjourn.
I would be glad to make a motion to adjourn. Mr. Wong, seconded by?
Delaine Lewis.
Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. None opposed. We are adjourned.